Welcome everyone to the September 12th City Council Work Session. Welcome to everyone hearing at home. And the first item up today is the Try Annual Report to the City Council from the Police Auditor. So I'm just going to turn it right over to our auditor, Mark Gisner, and get started. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm going to yield the floor to Mr. Lowey. The Civilian Review Board is required on an annual basis to give a report to council from the Civilian Review Board.
Walk up.
Mr. Lowey is the Chair of the Civilian Review Board, and so I'll yield the floor to him.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I will, as is my custom, be as brief as possible in this, try and cover the high points of this. The ordinance that enables Eugene's Civilian Review Board requires the board to prepare and present to the council an annual report that summarizes the civilian review board's activities, findings, and recommendations during the preceding year, assesses the performance of the police auditor, and evaluates the work of the auditor's office, including whether the office is functioning as intended. Eugene's model of civilian oversight, particularly the part that involves a civilian review board, is designed to provide transparency and help ensure confidence in the police complaint process. In 2011, the civilian review board met 10 times. We reviewed seven case files involving allegations of misconduct, two service complaints, and one policy complaint. In preparing for case reviews, board members have complete access to internal affairs investigative files, including call logs, correspondence, in-car videos, and digitally recorded interviews of complainants, officers, witnesses, and others who may have potentially relevant information. During our reviews, the Internal Affairs Investigator is available to answer questions about the complaint investigation, and the Internal Affairs Lieutenant who supervises the unit is also available to answer questions regarding department policies and procedures. We like to keep those two separate so someone who is doing fact-finding isn't also in the place of trying to explain why officers may have behaved in a particular way. The board follows a case review process that's delineated in our procedures manual, and it has seven steps. The auditor or the deputy auditor makes a case presentation. We review the complaint intake and classification, the complaint investigation and monitoring by the auditor's office, relevant department policies and procedures, policy and training considerations, the adjudication recommendations, and additional comments or concerns that we may have. In the annual report that you have is a synopsis of the individual cases we reviewed in 2011. I'm not going to go through those one after the other. They're there for your information. Another aspect of the board is since we have differing life, cultural, professional, and educational backgrounds and various degrees of experience with and exposure to law enforcement, we recognize the need for balanced training from a variety of sources, both inside the organization and outside in the larger community. In 2011, we had 10 trainings as well. We usually have a training at the same time we do a case review, roughly half and half inside and outside with an emphasis on social service agencies and delivery of services to vulnerable populations in the community, particularly as it relates to police officers' interactions with those communities that may occur. We also identify policy and training concerns that we pass on to the police commission or the department with the help of the auditor and come out of case reviews or the work that the auditor's office is doing. In 2011, three of those have been passed on. One, I think, is almost complete, if not complete. That has to do with police pursuits, which is a very high-risk activity that police officers engage in. Another is the care and custody of suspects who may be in police cars because sometimes their behavior can be violent in the car where they may do damage to themselves. And a third is if the Lane County Jail does not, has to do with how medical releases are done from the Lane County Jail, and what the policies and procedures might be for the police department in those circumstances. We met last night with a joint meeting of the police commission and the civilian review board, and they assured us that they have those issues on our work plan as well as others. In addition to the work about training and case reviews, it's also our role to evaluate the work of the police auditor. We do that along seven dimensions: ethics and integrity and independence, civilian review board support, community and citizen relations, complaint intakes and adjudications, the reporting responsibilities, judgment, and knowledge. In our 2011 valuation, I'm happy to report that in all areas, the police auditor and the offices of the police auditor met or exceeded those expectations, and in particularly in the areas ethics, integrity, and independence, and knowledge. Knowledge was exceeded by 100 percent of those who replied to the question, and ethics, integrity, and independence was almost 90 percent. So people are comfortable that it's an independent audit. In your form, you will see the results of those evaluations, as well as synopsis of comments that were made during the survey. And I believe you also got that same information when you did your evaluation of the police auditor earlier this year. So in conclusion, I would say that two things. One, that the police auditor and the police auditor's office is functioning as intended, and that our system of civilian oversight does continue to evolve and provide value to the community. The auditor, in his presentation, will go through details in terms of metrics and other things, but the thing that continues to impress me, and I continue to see that's important, is there's a focus on improving service to the public. And I think in any level of public service, that's one thing that we need to keep paramount and keep up there. The auditor does a good job of identifying issues, bringing them, he does not shy away from bringing controversial cases or cases that, we don't get softballs. We get ones that are, he really does wish to hear our interpretation of things, and they're not easy calls one way or the other. While we don't always agree on the different elements of outcomes, I think we do the work and we understand the issues that are behind it. So for my part at least, and the board, we're comfortable with how things are evolving and working. With that, I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
I just, thank you very much, Tim, and thank you to the civilian review board for their work and time and commitment. I just wanted to ask you if there, I think what I've heard from you is you think that the review board is getting what it needs and performing well?
Yes.
That's correct. And are there any things, concerns they have that they would like us to be aware of?
Well, there are a couple of technical concerns here in particular, and that's, and I think the department is working on that. One of the things that's always helpful is if we have in-car videos.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
If we have videos, in-car videos, related to complaints or related to allegations. That gives us a perspective on what's happening. It also gives us kind of an objective view of what's happening. You need to understand, or we understand at least, that in-car videos do not tell a complete story of what's there. But there have been some technical issues with videos in the terms of stops and complaints that the department is working on right now. In the terms of getting what we need, I think we find both the department and the office of the auditor responsive in that regard. We are bound by a confidentiality agreement we have in the terms of reviewing complaints, and I, just so people understand that we're not going to be sharing information out of school, and citizens who observe our process may be a little frustrated at times because the discussion might be a little cryptic from their perspective because they don't have the information that we have. So, and I think that's fine at this point, but I, you know, I just, as things come up, if we can continue to adjust in a agile way, which I think almost has to do with the auditor's interaction with the council and what the council may do in policies and procedures in that office, as opposed to trying to adjust, you know, by changing either ordinance or charter, if necessary, we could.
Have you received any direct concerns to the CRB from the public?
We, last year, we reviewed one complaint at the request of a complainant, and this year, we've had a couple of complaints, one that we decided not to review. We have received requests, and the one complaint that we did review last year, we got some correspondence from the person, but they did not attend the complaint itself.
Thank you. Any other comments?
I do want comments, but I wanted Mark to.
You want him to, I think Tim wanted to add, answer any questions you had.
No, we don't have any questions. Tim, I think you guys do a lot of work. I'd forgotten how much we had put on the CRB until I was sitting at the table last night, and then you had case files, and everybody was talking about all this stuff, and I'm thinking, oh, that's right, we asked them to do all this work. And I really appreciate the commitment that the CRB has given and the staff support. I think that it seems like it's a well-oiled machine that's doing exactly what we wanted to do. And I'll go ahead and make the other comment I wanted to make about, you know, when we set this up, it was kind of, not necessarily blind, but it was all conceptual, and we really didn't know how it was going to work. But I think with having Mark there, I mean, it's working perfect. And the best thing that I heard last night that really resonated with me was the cross-pollination between the CRB liaison at the police commission, because the idea in my mind's eye was that if any trends or any issues that come up that aren't being addressed at the police commission as far as policy review happens, that needs to happen, that person can take that message to the police commission instead of it being an edict from staff or from the sergeant, from the chief. So I think that that's working really well. I think that that's probably the best part of it.
Any other comments for now? Yes?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment. This is new information to me. I mean, I know that you guys have done trainings throughout the year, and I'm looking at the list here, and I am so impressed. But it's just, it's broad, it covers all kinds of important topics, and I wish I had time to attend those trainings with you because they're really important. And I'm, once again, I attended the meeting last night, and I was real impressed with the thoroughness of the case review and the even-handedness and the critical view. And I, for our hybrid system, I think it's working pretty well. So just wanted to make those comments. Thank you.
Just a couple of questions for Tim. Tim, regarding John Textor, his backhand, I played him in racquetball this morning. Is this one-shot? Is there any way I can beat him on that?
That's an it joke. I don't know, I don't play racquetball. Play that sport, I play handball. Don't do much of that anymore, so.
John is Tim's partner. Are there any of the members of the review board in the audience today?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay, thank you.
If everybody's okay, we'll move on back to Mark. I just wanted to make one comment before I do that. I heard George say before the meeting that he thought it was really good for the commission and the CRB to be together, and he actually learned through that that some people on the police commission don't quite understand the CRB's role either, so it really helps them have some clarity about the role of the CRB, and that helps the whole system. So I think that's a very positive thing.
We've established that as a meeting every year after the August break, so.
That's great. Okay, thank you, Tim. And now, Mark?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Back again, not too long ago, I think, back in around late June. So I just wanted to touch on some highlights of the report. I want to thank Tim and the members of the CRB. They've really done a fabulous job. They do a tremendous amount of work in case review, and sometimes they get hours of ICV, in-car video that they have to look at, for example, case files that are rather voluminous. And they really do a fantastic job on having Tim as Chair, who has a lot of historical background with the city and a number of different agencies, and including the City Council, has been very helpful for me to appreciate all the hard work that was done before I got here in terms of the formation of all this and the historical background of some of the things that have occurred. Vicky and Leah are here. I'm so blessed with great staff, and they just really, I think we gel really well as a team. The newsletter has been an awful lot of work, but I think that it's really been helpful to try to communicate our message and try to be as transparent as possible within the constraints of the Oregon Public Records Law, and I think that we've been able to do that. And I'm pleased that I haven't got pushback from anybody, and particularly those who are involved from an employee standpoint about dissatisfaction with that. We do say what a complaint is, and we also say what the closing is of it. In terms of some of the other things that we have, in terms of the vigorousness of some things, I wanted to point out that the last two forced complaints have come from inside the department, and so it's getting the supervisors to better understand their roles and responsibilities in terms of looking at those things. I still open some cases. I just opened a pursuit investigation, and we've done something new in terms of if your firearm accidentally discharges, there will be an investigation of that because, as you all are aware, there's a lawsuit somewhere in the process in which officers felt that the department didn't always take those issues seriously, and so we've adjusted so that we can determine what the cause was, whether it was a malfunction of the instrument or whether it was an officer being somewhat negligent. So we've looked at those things. Probably hasn't gone over well, but again, I think as a result of circumstances that were outside our control, it was necessary to take a look at those things. Some of our goals for this year are for officers and supervisors, again, to recognize where they think something must be, might be going wrong, and to bring it to others' attention so that it can be examined. And we're working towards that goal. I think the other thing which we talked about last night was understanding the difference between a criminal act and being an irritant, if you will. And so again, there's been a lot of high-level discussions. As I said last night, the police chief gets an awful lot of unsolicited advice from the auditor, and I appreciate that. I think one of the keys that make this system work compared to a lot of other places in the nation and in the world is that we're in the conversations. There was recently an article from folks from the New York City Review Board who expressed displeasure with the fact that they're not in the conversations. They issue a report, and it gets sent to the police administration, and they never hear from that police administration again. And so I'm pleased that we're in the conversation, and I think that that's key. Tim mentioned very briefly, and then I'll go to a couple of slides that we talked about, was the ICV issue and the capital investment for that, I think, is very important. Sometimes I'm suspicious when there's not ICV. I get paid to be suspicious in my role. So those things would be extraordinarily helpful. And I think then there's also, and it's been expressed by others, is that the record-keeping system and the computer system are where, is dated, and the chief will be the first to admit that, and we need to upgrade the capability of the data. So it's easier to mine, number one, and then when there's public records requests for information, that there's a place where people can go to get that information as opposed to having a number of their staff. People start having to pull paper and make copies. And if you ask for four or five years of trespassing citations on a daily basis, it only comes out to about four or five, but if you multiply that by 365 days a year, multiplied by five years, now you're talking about six, seven, eight thousand pieces of paper that have to be pulled to respond to a public record request. So certainly from a capital investment standpoint, I think that that would be very helpful because I think we're going to see more of that. So if you want to go to the slides real quick, because I want to go fast, and we provide a rather thorough annual report. I don't think there's much that we left out, and then people have the choice of reading what they like. But on page seven, for example, or on the first slide, actually, again, is a reiteration of the complaint process. It looks better in color because of the different roles and responsibilities. My colleagues from around the nation and the world all want a copy of this because it helps them craft their own.
Want to know how it's possible.
But I think it demonstrates that it's a very vigorous process, and also that there's a lot of decision points that have to be made in these type of personnel investigations. And so we do take that seriously, and we do do a thorough review of things. The next slide is the total complaints that we've had. We've had an uptick of, in particular, allegations of misconduct, somewhat allegations of criminal conduct, but also probably six of those, eight of the criminal conduct really had no basis, but the fact of the matter is we still examine them anyway because I think it's important that we do that. Again, the allegations of misconduct went up, and I think part of that is, a lot of it is just a result of that, I think that we hold officers to very high standards and expectations, and so I think that is one of the main reasons that's up there. And Internal Affairs does a very nice job of turning these things over in about 90 to 120 days for the most part. You go to other oversight agencies and investigations, and sometimes they're years-deep in the cases, and so we try to be as vigorous as possible. Inquiries are just, again, we're looking, and we just had one come in today, that this person made some very serious allegations, and I need to look at that before I classify it and make an officer go through the whole IA process because it just sounds uncharacteristic of what we typically hear in terms of a complaint. But if it turns out that there's even a sliver of evidence to move forward, we'll do that. Policy complaints as well. We had someone the other day complain about why an officer drew his weapon on him, and so I had a long discussion with him, and he understood at the end of the day that if you invade someone's personal space in a volatile situation, in other words, don't pull in right behind a police car when a police car has made a traffic stop on a freeway when it's dark. Not a good idea. And so we had that discussion, and he understood afterwards. He was trying to be helpful because it was his friend who got pulled over, but for a single officer out there by himself, it can be a scary situation. So we had a good discussion about that as well. We have dealt significantly more this year than in years past with people who have significant mental health issues and substance abuse issues, and I've had these conversations with some of you about just a community that really needs to reexamine its community corrections model. And that, while jail beds may be one of the table legs, we also have to look at examining some of those other issues as well because we're seeing it in our office. Allegations, they run the gamut of, on that next slide, the pie chart, all kinds of things. Of particular note, again, though, is vehicle pursuit, and I do want to say that, again, the culture is changing. Supervisors are taking greater responsibility on these pursuits and recognizing that it is a very high-risk thing, and if you're able to identify people, then it's not necessary or you use other means. Now, in terms of people who are accused of violent crimes and things, then I think the citizens of this city need to recognize that that's what's being pursued, and people need to get out of the way when that's happening. But other non-violent-type offenses, there are other methods to identify who the people are without having to engage in 100 mile-an-hour pursuit through our neighborhoods. So again, recognition on the part of the senior managers as well. Allegations and discipline, we're not permitted to, due to the protocols, to comment specifically about specific cases, but we are allowed to do analysis of that, and so we did an analysis of the disciplinary processes that occurred. And then, so I don't take too much time. The next thing with the four pie charts is we do survey our complaints to the best of our ability. We don't, we probably get about average what a mail survey response is, and people seem, the vast majority of people think that we are being helpful, and about 80 percent believe that the officer, or the supervisors are addressing their concerns, listen to their concerns, and those folks are somewhat dissatisfied. No one enjoys getting a traffic ticket. They think that perhaps we might be an advocate for them. We also see, I think, an uptick in folks who are involved in sort of mutual combat situations that there's usually one person who's not satisfied with the decision of the officer or the fact that they need to do additional investigations. So we're seeing more of that as well. And then Complaints and Commodities is the last slide that we have there. And again, they're all in your annual report. Sometimes we had a bit of a miscue in terms of redundancy, so sometimes you might see charts twice in a row in the second to the last rendition of our annual report, and there were just some conversion issues we had. We're not trying to emphasize that if you see a chart twice in a row in our first rendition of annual report that we think that that's something that you should look at a second time. It's just when you convert one data center base to another one and things like that, it didn't work out as well as we expected, but it's been corrected. So having said all that, and probably talk too much as it is, does anyone have any questions or concerns or anything like that?
Thank you, Mark. Very helpful report. I'll just make a couple observations and look and see what counselors would like to tell. I just want to say I think the report is reflective of the work, and I think it's very professional and well-documented, and I really appreciate that. I want to thank Leah and Vicky for their work. We lost Vicky to you, but it apparently is working out for both of you very well, so that's, that's good.
I'm thrilled, yes.
I wanted to say that I think, got a couple minutes, if you would just, for the public that might be listening, can you just really briefly reiterate what your job is for the public to hear?
We are, we are the ones that oversee the administrative investigation when people complain about how officers conduct themselves related to their job performance and personnel issues. And so police officers have a number of different job responsibilities. It's sort of easy to, a street sweeper has a fairly narrow focus of what their job is. Police officers have all kinds of things, but it has to stay within the policies and procedures of the police department in terms of what we can investigate and what we look at. If an officer is accused of criminal conduct, it still has to go through the criminal justice system, and we're allowed to monitor it, but there's a criminal investigation done either internally or externally, most often externally by another agency. It goes to the district attorney, and then they decide whether there's criminal charges or not. If at that point in time there's a decision made that now this is a personnel matter, then it can be examined by us, but we're limited to personnel action matters. We cannot help people fight a traffic ticket. Again, that still rests with the judge. We cannot make a decision about whether or not a person should have been charged with a crime or not. That's still the responsibility of prosecuting attorney for the city or the district attorney. So all those elements have to be in place as well. We can't be a legal advocate for folks. Again, that's an element that exists somewhere in the community. So again, we're responsible for examining whether or not police officers are following the policies and procedures of the department. the policies and procedures of the department, whether or not we think the policy and procedure needs revised or not, and whether we think that there are actions even as a group with the police department that might need improvements.
And thank you for that because I just feel like we need to be talking about your role. I'll put you on the, all the time because it remains to be confusing for a lot of folks. I want to say just a couple more things. One is that I appreciate the uptick in internal scrutiny within the police department. I thank you all for your compassion with the variety of people that you deal with on a regular basis. I appreciate the quick timeline of investigations. I note in your report that you feel like you still don't have enough participation in critical incidents and I would be interested in how you think that could be remedied. So we should talk about that and see if there's any room for movement on that. I take note that the sustained allegations show that the program is working as well as those that are not sustained. And I appreciate the work of you and the police department to improve services because that's really what this is all about. So, and I want to tell you that again, I know we said it before, I think the newsletter is very, very well done and very informative. And I noticed that we still have a lot of service complaints, so I'm looking to see those come down over time and keep working at that. And so those are my comments. I'm going to turn to Andrea now.
Thank you, Maria. Thank you, Mark. It was a very good description of what you do. I just kind of wanted to talk a little bit about your relationship with Internal Affairs because I think, last night it was like a trifecta of a presentation and Internal Affairs was there with their statistical report and I'm sure you, we all can get a copy of it if you're interested in it. But I just want to speak a little bit to the fact that Lieutenant Feldman will be moving on and Lieutenant Nate Rennell will be doing this. There's going to be a change in leadership there, but I think the staff there does a pretty good job too, from what I understand, and the adhesiveness of your office, working with them, I think really kind of lends to a good service. Thank you.
And I just, it always seems like I'm training because they turn them over about every two years, so that's a little bit of a hurdle at times to try to get them to segue from being trained all their lives to do criminal investigations to segue into doing administrative investigations. And I think one of the things I've already talked to the chief about is one of the things maybe we can do better is make sure that the lieutenant of Internal Affairs understands exactly what their roles are, how much rope, if you will, that they have to initiate things because I think that that hasn't been well-defined in the past. And so I think with the changes that are occurring in management, it's an opportunity to do that because I think it gives them a better advantage if they have a clear understanding of what their role is. We talk a lot and again, I think it's important, the most important thing is our office are part of the conversations and I think that they listen well, even unsolicited advice. So I'm thankful for that.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you, Mary. Just a reminder to the public and also to remind myself that the police auditor is one of only three employees that reports directly to the city council. You're one of only three employees that the council hires. If that being the case, the public themselves have a much more direct influence on who fills this role, who has the position than any other position in the city. That's very important that people understand that, that you are truly one of the closest servants of the people who is an employee of the City of Eugene. That being said, more than just working with the police department, you also analyze trends. You see what the trend is and you make recommendations. It's not an easy job to actually take a look at the broader picture and make changes in what are long-term trends that have been a part of the city for such a, you know, for, on an ongoing basis. So you have a difficult job. The third thing I wanted to say is that for a city our size, we're very fortunate to have somebody of Mr. Gerson's talent and experience and background and the staff that he has surrounded himself with. For a city our size, we're really truly fortunate to have you as a member of our staff. So thank you very much for the hard work you do and thank you for taking it very seriously. And thank you for liking where you live.
Well, I was thinking about it and I had this discussion with my wife last night too, is A, the parliamentary commissioner model, if you look around the world, is probably the most successful model of oversight because you're not reporting to the executive branch in which the chief also reports to. You're reporting separately to a body, you bypass the executive branch and go right to the legislative branch. And I think that's important. And I think another thing is, and I think history will show that this is probably one of the best city councils that this city has ever had in terms of working to solve problems without that personal animosity that can exist in some political bodies. And so I, that's a draw for me. And so you all need to be complimented as well and the fact that you don't, I don't know if medal is the right word, but, but you don't meddle in our affairs with some sort of political agendas. So we are allowed to work independently. So I think it works both ways.
Anybody else? I'll just close it out then, Mark, with a thank you to all of you and thank you to our police department and the work that you do together. I think it makes us a better city. And I did want to say that for the public, often because of confidentiality, because of other things, they don't know what happens when a complaint has been sustained. And so I think while this keeps confidentiality, your report here shows exactly some of the things that happen internally outside of our eyes, but really do make a difference in that our police department takes care of themselves, including if necessary, and not often, but including the possibility of counseling or demotion or oral reprimand or resignation prior to conclusion or suspension or termination. And those are all things that are possible if necessary and we hope they're not necessary often, but I do think people need to know that those are things that do occur because we hear on a regular basis, there's no, there's no consequences for anything. And so I think this is an important piece of information to validate the good work that's being done and to validate that the eyes are on having the best public safety system that we can have. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Need to tape them down.
Next item on our agenda.
I thought you were going to show those slides.
Is the Public Art Master Plan update. And we're getting ready to do that. I'm sorry, I don't understand what's going on there. Okay, please. Yep.
Take a second here to get our technology set up.
Isaac, what'd you do?
Soccer. Soccer injury. Okay, it'll take a few minutes to see it going. Let me wake my computer back up. It's kind of tumbling.
You betcha. I'm glad that wasn't a problem.
With good reason. It's good to be immobile at all this allow.
What's that?
It's good to be immobile.
Yeah. Keeps you humble. There you go.
We're going to be discussing the Public Art Master Plan update.
All right. Are we ready to go?
Ready to go.
Okay, can everybody see? Can we do it through the screen where you can see this presentation? So hello, thank you for taking the time and interest to learn about Eugene's public art program. I'm Isaac Marquez. I work in cultural services and I'm the public art manager. Today I'd like to provide a presentation with a very brief history of public art in Eugene, followed by examples of public art projects from around the country and ending with our own public art plan and a sampling of projects we've taken on to address the plan. The earliest traceable public art I can find is in 1952. This date is disputable. We were disputing it earlier before this meeting started. This piece is "Our Fish Fountain" by Tom Hardy. Tom Hardy is a Portland sculptor. He also has work at the University of Oregon on Lawrence Hall and at the Portland State University. In 2010, we received a call that this sculpture was in disrepair and falling apart. We hired Steve Reinmet's bronze studio to come in and renovate the work and today it looks like this. Looks much better than that first droopy photo. This is an interesting story and one of my favorites, one of my favorite public art stories. The Register Guard reported on the fact that we were renovating the work. A woman named Jane Harrison called and confessed that a friend of her ex-husband's had ripped one of the fish off the sculpture in 1961. They had given it to her mother, who placed it in her garden and where it lived in Coquille, Oregon for forty-nine years. When she read this story, she called the bronze studio and returned the fish. We found the spot where it had been ripped off and returned the fish to its school. We cannot talk about Eugene's public art history without mentioning this man. This is Jan Zok. Jan Zok is the grandfather of public art in Eugene. You'll recognize some of his work. This is one of his pieces at City Hall. This is another one of his notable pieces at City Hall. Jan Zok was born in Czechoslovakia. He came to the United States to paint the Czech Pavilion at the 1939 World's Fair in New York City. While he was away, the Nazis invaded Czechoslovakia and he was never able to go home. He joined the faculty at the University of Oregon in 1958. As I said here, you can see much of his work around City Hall. He's probably our largest contributor to public art, but he had bigger things in mind. From 1964 to 1974, Jan Zok worked diligently to bring the International Sculpture Symposium to Eugene. This was his idea. He was successful only after gaining partnerships from around the area and an infusion of funding from the National Endowment for the Arts. His success for the 1974 Sculpture Symposium without question placed Eugene on the map in the art world. Zok invited six sculptors. This is Big Red by Bruce Beasley, probably one of the most notable sculptors from the symposium. The sculptors worked with three rules. First, the artists had to work publicly. This is a picture of Big Red being fabricated at Lane Community College. Artists had to work with students. This is a picture of Hope Hughes Pressman signing the deed for Big Red. And finally, artists had to work in a media they had never worked in before. This piece here is by Hugh Townsley. These are abstract forms. This artwork is in Alton Baker Park. Look at Alton Baker Park in 1974. Looks like a desert. What's that? Yeah.
What skyline?
Interestingly enough, the, this piece by Hugh Townley was originally meant for Bend, Oregon, and when the Bend residents saw a picture of what he was proposing, they said, "No way." So they sent him over the mountains to Eugene. This is the picture of Hugh Townley working with his students to place the work. Okay. The next notable time in our history is 1981. In 1981, Eugene leaders were in stride with metropolitan areas around the country. They recognized the contribution visual arts make to the social and physical environment. They also wished Eugene to be a regional leader in public art. With this, they successfully passed our own Percent for Art ordinance. This ordinance codified our Art in Public Places Municipal Code. This code covers capital construction and purchases of land with improvements. Construction projects include remodels and renovations over $50,000, but not work that is required for maintenance. Some of the artwork we've acquired under the Percent for Art ordinance includes the house curtain at the Silver Concert Hall.
Gorgeous.
It is gorgeous, absolutely. And not only is it gorgeous, but it is one of the most outstanding curtains in the nation. There are a lot of house curtains with plenty of art in them, but none of them have these horizontal linear elements and the handwork that this curtain has. This curtain needs help and we are looking around for strategies to replace it, refurbish it, or replicate it. Other art that's been purchased with the Percent for Art program include these concrete cast medallions at Broadway Place and of course Eugene Skinner.
That fellow.
We'll make a point here that from 1981 to 2010, over the course of 29 years, Eugene has collected art and fulfilled the requirements of the Public Art Ordinance. This work, along with public art donations to the city, was done without a guiding vision. Often, the work was driven by a requirement or the need to react to a proposal. And we like to think now that with a public art plan in place, that we are doing something different. We're working towards a vision by strategizing our efforts and really, really using our resources wisely. I also like to make this point, that public art projects come from many different places. The Percent for Art Ordinance, which is on the left-hand side, is one place where public art projects come from. The other place they come from are opportunities and partnerships. We look to leverage every dollar and upon doing so, no matter where the project comes from, we never do art for the sake of art. We always have broader goals in mind. We always are working towards something else. We're looking for ways that visual arts can support our efforts or our vision as a community. Moving on, 2007. The last point in our timeline was 1981. We are now fast-forwarding to 2007. In 2007, city council unanimously adopted the city's cultural policy review. This is our ten-year cultural plan. Within that, they identified art as a strategy of revitalization. And the key component for making that happen didn't come to life until 2009. In 2009, we received a national grant from the National Endowment for the Arts, which allowed us to work on a plan to redirect Eugene's public art program. This plan was directed by Eugene's Public Art Committee and a fourteen-member steering committee. I think it's important to note that our Public Art Committee is our go-to body for advising on the public art collection. They are a hard-working group of volunteers and we really appreciate their input and work along the way. Let's see. Okay, in 2000, I'm going to go back a slide here. In 2009, something else happened. As we in Eugene started to look at our public art plan, we became aware of public art projects from around the nation. And this was inspiring. I've queued up four projects here that I'd like to talk about. They've inspired us and I hope they inspire you. It's really healthy, I think, to look beyond our own boundaries to see what's going on, especially in the public art world. Has anybody been to San Jose Airport recently? This project won the 2011 Public Art Project of the Year. It's titled Hands and it's by artist Christian Mohler. The only criteria for this project was that the artwork fit the $100,000 public art budget. Gone are the days of a solo artist chipping away at a marble statue alone in their studio. Artists are pushing the boundaries of technology. They're bringing, they're crossing disciplines and they're bringing new things in front of us and pushing us into the next generation of art. Christian Mohler designed a computer program which used simple construction tools to make this happen. So this is chain-linked fence and white plastic pixels. That's it. I've talked to the public art administrator who made this project happen and she said the only way they were able to make it possible was through tight coordination with their facilities department. So they worked hand-in-hand with facilities to give the artists everything they could give to create this level of impact for $100,000. That's an impressive example. It's pretty funny, work hand-in-hand.
You avoided that. You avoided that metaphor on purpose.
You avoided that metaphor on purpose.
Yesterday, my son asked me if they had every letter of the alphabet in there, and I hadn't thought that it might be sign language.
I don't see sign language.
He's six. I don't see sign language either, but it's a good thought.
He's thinking outside the box, though.
Okay, the next one. This is a three-story videotripty. This is on the Henry Madden Library Elevator Shaft. This is in California State University's Fresno Campus. The call to artists stated that they were looking for artwork that celebrated basket weaving among the region's native people. Susan Narduli picked the project up. Susan Narduli filmed this master weaver over 20 months it took her to make the basket. She created a 5,300-hour video, which runs continuously night and day, fall through graduation. The movements of this weaver are slowed, and sometimes they are barely perceptible, but the rhythm is constant, like breathing. In fall semester, she starts with nothing, and by graduation, she ends with a complete basket. I think Susan Narduli successfully celebrated basket weaving of the region's native people with that project. Has anybody heard of Conflict Kitchen? Conflict Kitchen is in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. It's by John Rubin and Don Wolenski. Conflict Kitchen is a takeout-style eatery which only serves food from the nations the United States is at war with. This is Iranian takeout. They rotate the facade and the food, the menu, every three months. And during that time, they host events and discussions about the people and cultures of those places whose food they are featuring. And here, we have Afghan takeout. Conflict Kitchen in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania. Finally, this is my last example. This piece is titled "The Persistence of Vision." What you're looking at are cast pewter heads. I'm sorry. This piece is by Ralph Helmick and Stuart Schechter, and this is located in Charlotte County Courthouse in North Carolina. So, back to the project. These are cast pewter heads. They're models, they're model head, their heads modeled after the people of Charlotte, their actual people, who are alive in this project. Here's a better shot of the pewter heads. In the courthouse lobby, these heads start as an amorphous cloud on the ceiling at the beginning of the week. And gradually, throughout the week, they drop down, forming a face. By Wednesday, the face is fully profiled, and it's a person from the community. They don't know who it is until Wednesday. They get to check it out and see if it's their face. And then on Thursday, the pewter heads start moving back up to the ceiling cloud.
Amazing.
Absolutely amazing. And this is what I mean when I express that artists are pushing the boundaries, and they're crossing disciplines, and they're using technology like never before. Okay, back to us. Oops, one more shot. Persistence of Vision. Coincidentally, these two artists were just commissioned for Southern Oregon University, and they, it was a medical school, and they created a project called "A Heart and Mind." It's an amazing project. It hangs in the lobby, and it's separate glass panels. And if you look through one direction, it creates a heart. And if you walk around the other side, it creates a brain. The visual does. Okay, back to us. So now, now we're working off a public art plan. We sent this plan to you when it was finalized. This is what I'm talking about, and this is what we have used to guide ourselves for the last three years. We worked closely with the Public Art Committee to go through this document and to pull out the high points. I sent this link to you so you could see what we're looking forward to doing. From the plan, we came up with five major focal areas. We need to manage the existing collection, develop community involvement, generate partnerships, establish sustainable funding, and strategically build Eugene's public art. I'd like to use some examples of projects we've taken on in the past three years, which address some of these goals. And certainly, we have not completed everything. So, the first one is to manage the existing collection. This is a piece titled "Sound Aquarius." "Sound Aquarius" is a sound-water sculpture. It was commissioned with the 911 Station. It was a poor fit for the 911 Station. The sound, the water, the constant movement really created challenges, and we didn't have the kind of oversight we needed to keep this sculpture going. We were able to work with our partner, the Eugene Hilton, who now hosts the sculpture in front of the hotel, and they have their maintenance supervisors oversee the sculpture. And it's available for the public. It's a good fit. This sculpture is the marker of origin at the train station. I'll talk a little bit more about the marker of origin in a few. We're having some problems with it, and this is a specialist, a public art specialist, who we've hired to come in and help guide us on what we should do about this piece. And finally, here's Kezey getting a makeover. This is all under managing the existing collection. In the coming years, we need to develop interpretive material for our public art. That's a missing piece in our program. We need to establish educational material. I expect early this school year, we will have a curriculum for students, for teachers to use, for young students, about art in the Eugene Public Library. And then, we also are called upon to refine the administration of the program. Okay, moving on to developing community involvement. This task asks us to create interactive art happenings, to enlist students as volunteers, and to host art-focused special events. We have had more success by instituting art-focused special events. Our Summer in the City Downtown Series has had a visual art event every year. The first year, we had an open studio on Broadway. The second year, we had a drawing marathon. And just this year, we had a photography event called "Be a Shutterbug." Here are two students who were successful in our temporary art pilot project. These two students engaged the community in a very unique way. This is the zine they created. I'm holding it up here. These two students interviewed and collected stories from members of the community. They then published them in this homemade magazine. And then they used our traffic control boxes to place poetic fragments from each story of a Euginian. We just had them do a presentation to the city's planning group, and planners asked them which were the most common stories. And they said there were two threads. People really cherish the era that created the Saturday Market, the Oregon Country Fair, and the Eugene Celebration. And the other thread was about the river. People really value our river and are drawn to it for many different reasons. I thought Julian and Nina, who did this project, were amazing in their approach, and they really brought us kind of a new view of what we can be doing with our infrastructure and our public art efforts. Okay? This area, to generate partnerships, I think this is the area we've made the most headway. We've successfully engaged both internal partnerships with other departments and external partnerships to create new opportunities. I have two examples here. The first one is these bicycle corrals. These bicycle corrals were designed, fabricated, and installed by Lane Community College art students. This is on a day that we dedicated the corrals. And if you just look at the pride on the faces of these students, I think it's amazing that they had a chance to shape our environment. There, the mayor is presenting them the wrench to the city. I don't think that's been done yet. The second project I would like to highlight is a UVO project. The University of Oregon and the city of Eugene came together to create Suburban Projections. And there's a video that I'll show you in a second. The Suburban Projection Festival happened on Wednesday nights last November. It's happening again this November, and I encourage you to get out into the cold and the dark this November to see what we're up to. The Arts and Business Alliance of Eugene recognized Suburban Projections as an outstanding partnership this year, and they hired Kay Wood to create a video for us. So we have a three-minute video here from Kay Wood. Let's pause. I think this was plugged into the wrong feed here. Okay.
Thank you, guys.
The Suburban Projections project was a series of ephemeral art experiences that brought people together during a very dark time of day, week, and year. A Wednesday evening in the middle of winter, when people often don't go out, and they especially don't frequent downtown as a core of businesses or an entertainment district.
Suburban Projections is a digital art and media festival, championing emerging artists and activating back alleys and parking garages in and around downtown Eugene. This partnership was between the University of Oregon's Arts Administration Program and the City of Eugene's Cultural Services Department.
Digital art is a form of art that not a lot of people are necessarily exposed to, but it's an easy form of art to present, and it's, in some ways, the art of the future. And it literally illuminates spaces, dark spaces, which is what Suburban Projections attempted to do.
As a partnership between UVO and the City of Eugene, Suburban Projections helped us reimagine the possibilities for public art in Eugene.
It felt magical because it felt like you were bathed in this light of art and the connection among people in the community coming together, a reminder of something creative and stimulating in a space that otherwise was very overlooked. And it gave me and the other people I was with in the community of Eugene a sense of the possibility of potential at Eugene.
You want to begin a partnership, look for talent, look for drive, creativity, inspiration, look for the person who's attached to these ideas and give it a chance. And if it's time for your business to grow, to evolve, to be seen to the horizon, that would be a great time to open yourself up to a partnership. The rule that comes to mind in terms of partnerships is authentic. In our mind, every partnership has to be a win-win scenario. And in this case, Suburban Projections was a win-win.
There were some unintended outcomes from Suburban Projections that we didn't see coming. We worked with four graduate students out of the Arts Administration Program at the university, and our intern, our public art intern, was on that team. Before she graduated, she received a job in public art at San Antonio. Questions were about Suburban Projections. San Antonio wants to take their program on this path of doing more digital art and projections. Another outcome, and I'll call other public art managers to find out what they're up to and how they're doing it. And in this case, the public art manager from Champaign, Illinois, called me. Her cultural counsel had asked her to find out how we did this. They would like to do the same thing. And so they called us to ask a bunch of technical questions about the project. And finally, there was an impact across the globe. There is now a sister festival in Sarajevo, Bosnia. And the woman that you see interviewing, and her name's Roya Emirsovi, Roya traveled to Sarajevo to help their arts administrators set a festival like this up. Again, we're doing this again on Wednesdays in November, if you'd like to come out. Okay, moving on. We were also called upon to establish sustainable funding. The public art plan points strongly to our need to update our funding mechanisms. Linking our, public art resources only to capital projects and property acquisitions is fairly erratic, and it creates challenges for strategically using our public art to achieve community goals. There's many programs across the nation have readjusted the way they fund. Also, they have added funding mechanisms such as public art requirements for private development. We, earlier I talked about the marker of origin. This is an example of a project that falls outside of our routine maintenance fund. We don't, we don't have the money to fix this sculpture right now. This rust here is an indicator that the sculpture's rusting from the inside, and it's rusting at the base. And one of the qualities of mild steel, when it rusts, is that it grows to 100 times its original size. So if, if, this won't happen in the next five years, but if we left this go, this sculpture would eventually jack itself off its base or become a hazard. And we would lose this great icon, which welcomes visitors to our city.
And bring local artists.
Yes, that's right, and exceptional local artists. Okay. And finally, the plan calls upon us to strategically build Eugene's public art collection. The Public Art Committee has identified key locations where we'd like to invest in art. One of the interesting things is that few of these locations are actually associated with a city building. So here is a piece that was commissioned with, through federal stimulus money. This is an example of a prominent piece of art in a great location, a large-scale piece in a prominent location, I should say. This is by Lee Eminan. In the spirit of stimulus funding, Lee utilized over 14 businesses, suppliers, and assistants to complete this work. We'd like to thank our federal stimulus money for allowing us to commission a sculpture like this. This sculpture is meant to honor the decades of restoration efforts in Delta Ponds. We conducted a national search for this Percent for Art project. This is the new police headquarters. How many of you seen the new police headquarters? Almost all of you, no, few of you? Okay. We conducted a national search with two goals for this project. The first goal is we asked artists to honor the service of Eugene Police Department staff, volunteers, and officers. And the second goal was we wanted the art to create a dignified sanctuary for people who need the services of the department. This is, artwork is not in its final form, and actually, right now, I believe John Rose is installing the final pieces. These artists approached this public area and this entrance as a room, and they wanted to create a sculpture with symbolic meaning and an illusion of lamps, which dot the wall, which create like, which create the feeling of welcome. So the lamps are going in today, right now, as we speak. On October 20th, we will be dedicating a sculpture at this site. This site, the Public Art Committee recognized as a prominent location, as it is our intersection between the University of Oregon and the city of Eugene. We funded this project with public art funds. We worked with the business district, and the Duck Store contributed money, as well as the University of Oregon. Again, we conducted a national search, and the artist was right under our nose. This is a model of the sculpture. This is "The Great Blue Heron" by Judd Turner. We will be dedicating this sculpture for our 150th birthday. And I believe this piece will serve as our next cultural icon. It celebrates our natural history. It draws on that connection to the Willamette River. And it's fabricated out of recycled bicycle parts, which gives a nod to sustainability and our national bicycle rating. This is a picture of Judd in his studio last week. On 5/4, you'll be looking directly at the chest of the bird. Since we commissioned Judd, he, his art has taken off. He's now selling faster than he can produce artwork in London. And he actually quit his day job and is working as a full-time artist now. So where do we go next? The future. In refining future sites for public art, this site is one of the top on our list. In refining future sites for public art, this site is one of the top on our list. This is Franklin Boulevard as you come from Glenwood into Eugene. And currently, this is what welcomes our visitors.
Back in 1952.
Thanks again for taking time to learn more about the public art program. That's, that's what I have.
You, Isaac. That was great. I'm all inspired. Excited by it. You know, yesterday I was reading in our effort to be a human rights city and the Declaration of Human Rights. And one of the human rights they talk about for everyone is access to arts and culture. Chris.
Actually, Betty had her hand before me. I'll go after her.
Thank you. I did. This is really wonderful. I was going to suggest that we have a council tour someday with the media and look at all the public art we have. Also, I wanted to mention the poetry in the, in the Overpark. Does that count as art?
Yes.
That's a great thing that everybody should look at. And it's accessible to every, it's really a nicer prize when you go through the parking garage and see this walk into poetry. And then another suggestion, could we, I like the connection between downtown and the university, between the city and the university. I think it'd be good if we could have some artwork between, a walking path between downtown and the university, spots with art and a place to sit perhaps also. And it could be, it could be poetry, it could be sculpture, it could be all sorts of things. But something to sort of mark a pathway from downtown to the university campus. Thank you. It's great.
Thank you. Chris, and then George, and then Andrea.
Thanks. I'm very impressed with the projection art project. I was in Kansas City last year and they have some very impressive projection art projects they do there. And the first thought that occurred to me is that giant concrete wall in the Halt Center.
Yep.
I'm sure you probably have already thought of that. But I'm, you know, that's a great opportunity for a relatively easy investment to get something interesting going. In addition to whatever other grander plans you might have for that building, I'm really excited to see what we might be able to do with that. I was also visiting the Portland Art Museum last month and looking at modern art exhibit there. Saw some really great things that I think would be adaptable or able to be used. And some, some found art stuff that I thought was really tremendous. And so I think there's huge opportunities that we can do. I like the word authenticity because I think that really is what people are looking for. And they don't want to feel that their art is just artificially produced for the sake of art, but it has, it's related to the community and what the community's all about. Which gets then to my next point is, you know, a lot of folks question why we want to make the commitment to art. You know, why are you spending money on that art stuff? Why aren't you spending it on what's important? And I think it's a really interesting question to ask. And I've always kind of, as I've said many times, the quality of life and our quality of livelihood can't be separated. They are together. And whenever I visit a community that's made an investment in art, I think it's the quickest and, and most efficient way to tell visitors, as well as the people that live there, that we're a community that likes itself. And I think it's an important message for us to be able to convey that we actually like ourselves and that you can tell that by our investment in how our community looks and feels. And so I think for, for that kind of an investment, you can make a major statement about yourself, which I think is an important statement we do want to make. Do we like ourselves enough to want to look good or to make that kind of a commitment to ourselves? And so I think that's why we need to continue to make that level of commitment. Because I know when, whenever I visit a community, that tells me volumes about what's the nature of that community. If I want to move my business there or if I want to visit it as a tourist location, I think that makes a significant difference. Where I work right now, we're getting ready to start a whiteboard project, which I think is, is something we're going to be doing specifically what we're doing. But I would love to see that whiteboard project begin to move to a larger way the community talks about itself. Doesn't have to be ours. I would love for us to use a whiteboard project for the community to begin to talk about itself. I think there's a lot of things you can do with that in terms of a community's ability to express its feelings and talk about itself. So I'd love to kind of see what, where that might go. But I'm really impressed with the presentation. Thank you very much. I think it's a tremendous, tremendous thing that we can do that does have value for our quality of life. And I think all the work that you're doing is very creative and, and very authentic. I like it.
George.
Yeah, Isaac, thanks for the presentation. I think there's a lot of people in this community that are really aware of what the city does toward public art. There was one point that you brought up that I think needs to be repeated over and over and over again, and that's on capital, or capital projects, that there was an ordinance passed about the 1% of the cost of that, that project being spent on public art. A lot of people don't realize that, don't know that it's there. And they question, why are you spending the money on the art on? I feel that a number of questions about that in reference to the new police department. Why are they putting up all this fancy art when they're, you know, you're so strapped for cash? Well, it's because of that ordinance that's in place. People don't know this there. So whenever the topic comes out, that needs to be brought up. And the other thing, if you're talking about the future, you know, coming into town on Franklin Boulevard, there's a lot of public and private art and new architecture and everything else that makes it a very pretty entrance into the town, into the city. What I would like to see us concentrate is efforts now on the Highway 99 area. You come into town on Highway 99, it's almost an embarrassment. So rather than focusing more into where there's already what I consider a pretty grand entrance with the new I-5 bridge, with the, the art from the EMX and everything that's going on in the university, let's focus our attention on the other end of town.
Andrea.
Oh, George took the words out of my mouth about the Highway 99 area. Thank you, though. This was an awesome presentation. Very good. I like, I see all the other arts folks in the audience. I'm glad to see you all. But that is true, you know, downtown isn't the only place where people live. And it would be nice to be able to disperse the kind of art, public art out in the community. And I guess I just kind of have a drummed beat about an issue that I brought up during, talking about 150 years of Eugene. You know, we, the community did a memorial to the Asian community when they were deported to concentration camps here during that time. And there really hasn't been any conversation or any movement in my minds either, or that I know of, maybe I just don't know about it. But you know, we moved the African-American community away from the river at some point in time to build that bridge. And I don't think it's an urban legend. It seems like there's documentation to prove that. And I really would think that, I would like to think that at some point in time, either a community group or the city could be a partnership around having some kind of a memorial there for them. Because I think that that's really important part of our history. I think that when things like that happen in a community, you know, if you don't talk about it, it's because it wasn't good. And I'm not saying that it wasn't, that it was good, but I think that there's needs to be an acknowledgement around that. And I think that art would be a good way to, to do that. You know, as you talk about other projects, if there was a possibility, I think that that would be a good thing.
A couple of things that I'd like to bring up again. One is that as we've moved out of City Hall, all of those art pieces are all over the place in our City Hall. I just want to be sure that under the protect what we have and take care of what we have, that we're taking care of that. And as we think about what we're going to be or what's going to be done with that property, that, that, those pieces of art become part of that thinking. I'm sure that's on your list, but I just can't help but bring it up because I, every time I walk through there, I worry about it. So I'm, I want to make sure we're doing everything we can to take care of it while it's there and then plan for its future. The other thing is that, and I was watching you, watching the piece in this about the pink boxes. I can't tell you how many times I've heard people in the community say, I don't get it. And so there is something about this, the way this stor, it's a wonderful story. I'm just not sure we told it well enough for people to understand both the stories and the connection to the, to the boxes. And I'm sure it's not because people haven't tried, but I'm just saying, I think that having that permeate the community gives, gives great, a lot more value to those, to those boxes other than, my, is that just another quirky thing Eugene has been up to? So I just want to, and I'm not saying that in any derogatory way at all. I think it's a great exploratory art thing. I just think many people didn't understand the connection between the stories and the, and the boxes. And they missed something really special. So I don't know how we do a better job of that because I know sometimes we, we talk and talk and work and work and still it doesn't, it doesn't fully get out there. The only thing I was thinking about is as you think about doing the suburban projections again, perhaps we could try a, if the Register Guard would be helpful, or the Weekly or something, perhaps we could give a, put a big invitation thing in, out as a city to invite the public to come and enjoy this, this opportunity to explore that form of art. I mean, a real kind of heartfelt invitation that we want people to come and, and share that. And the other piece that I wanted to suggest is for you guys to think about is, we have a lot of neighborhoods and we're all proud of our neighborhoods and we're, and are part of the community. And I, it'd be wonderful if we thought about how art, art connects the center of the city to all of our, our different neighborhoods and is an expression of what we're proud of and what we, we love about our neighborhoods. And maybe there's something, I mean, I know entering Trainsong, they're, they've got a piece of land, they're looking for something that does that. I think in a sense, Big Red already does that for the Whittaker neighborhood. I'm, I'm thinking when you go over the bridge into the neighborhoods in Harlow or over into the Cal Young area, are there places that, those could be art connections to those parts of the city as well? So that as you explore what you like about your city, there's a, a piece of art that is expressive of that, those different parts of the community. Betty.
Following up on what Andrea said, it's a good idea. We also should have something about the Native Americans who lived here before any of us. In Tulsa, they have a museum dedicated to, in memory of the race riot, big race riot there. And, which is, as you said, commemorating something, it doesn't have to be good. In Nashville, they have in the library a whole room that replicates a fountain, the fountain where they, sort of fountain where people sat in. But we sometimes forget that there were Native Americans here before us.
I also think, and I know this is happening, that Ken Keyzie's getting loved to death downtown. He's, yes, somebody's sitting on him or with him 24/7, it appears. So that's, that's a challenge for us as a, as a community as well. Anybody else? Thank you very, very much. Keep us up on how everything is going and let us help as much as we can. With that, we're done for today, guys. Thank you.
Really well done, man. That was a really great presentation.
I didn't know what those pink boxes were.